Computer backdrop we got going on here tonight, huh?
I like the fire.
Putting me to sleep though.
I don't know if you heard me.
Other than him.
You're good.
Oh, I didn't know we had a speaker in here. Alright.
Thank you, pause.
Right, alright, I will call this meeting of the Durham Board of Selectmen to order on November twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. We'll note that, uh, Selectman Bullier is not with us tonight because he's doing something much more important, meeting his new granddaughter. That's why he's not, not with us tonight, so. Any amendments to the agenda? Nope, okay, good. Alright, moving on, number three, uh, public comments. So, Joe here is a reporter from the Journal, so he's, unless you live in Durham and you're gonna make a public comment too, but. Alright, um, so I don't see anybody here to make public comments, so we'll move on. Uh, we also had an opportunity on the agenda tonight, I think this was our third, or maybe fourth, third, third. Opportunity to receive any public input on how people think, uh, priorities on how the ARPA funds should be used, but I don't, there's no members of the public here tonight, so.
No, I, I did get an email from, uh, gentleman by the name of Jim Samborn. And Jim had two suggestions, one was to give it back to the federal government to reduce the national debt. And the other one was to put speed bumps on either side of runaround pond. So I'd share that with you.
Alright, thank you, uh, yeah, that, that is an op- giving it back is an option. We could, it would require a town vote, but. Uh, that could happen, okay. Thank you, Mr. Samborn. Okay, there's nobody else here for that?
I'll have to go get Alan.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. So the next item on the agenda is, um, Alan's got some, uh, Alan Plummer, our code enforcement officer, had put in a request as part of capital, uh, plan for next year to get a large, uh, plot scanner. And he made a very compelling case and really in the opinion of the board, the discussion we had that night is that there's really, it would be better not to wait to buy this and the board can allocate funds from the municipal capital account, uh, to pay for this. If I read the papers right, it's somewhere at just over seven thousand dollars, I think was the, uh.
Yes.
Cost, and so I think he's gonna come and kinda give us the final details and then, then we'll see if, uh, I, I think ideally if we're all, um, on board still, then we would vote to, uh, allocate those funds authorized. Yep. So, you, I think last time we talked about the scanner, um, you had a pretty good idea what you were looking for, but I think we, we just needed like a little bit more definitive option, like this is what I wanna buy, this is how much it costs and can I do it?
So, um, you should have a copy of my proposal, it's part of the monthly report from the CEO. And I did get a price, it was a little bit higher than I thought, but seven thousand one hundred and twenty is the cash option. There are thirty-six lease, forty, forty-eight month lease and a sixty-month lease. And there is a annual cost of three ninety-five and that's a maintenance cost, um, that we, you can decide to get or not get.
Is that whether it's the lease or cash, or does the lease option include that?
That's a good question, he didn't say that the lease option included that. So I think that's in addition to the lease option. So it's, um, maintenance and labor and that kinda stuff, present, preventive maintenance. I can't imagine there would be much, but I don't know that we'd wanna go without that either.
At the end of the lease, we own it?
Um, yes. But I would think the cash option would be the better way to go because of the amounts. I didn't figure out the amounts, but it's a higher amount if you, if they lease it.
I don't, I don't get the lease.
I know, it, it really doesn't.
The math doesn't drive with a typical lease setup, that's what, I didn't know if it was a mistake, that would be my only question.
I don't lease anything anyway, so I don't know about leases.
I think the only option to leasing would be, and it's actually not how we've talked about funding this, is that you make it part of your operating budget instead of a capital expense. But I think we're specifically talking about using capital funds to pay for this.
Yeah, no, I agree, what I meant by I don't get the leases, I don't get the pricing structure of the lease.
Right. It's like they don't want you to do it.
It's like, if you, if you wanna lease it, it's fine, but you're gonna pay more. Uh, I've never seen.
Don't you pay more with leases? I don't know.
Typically, typically there's a buyout at the end of a lease, you pay the residual upfront and then whatever the buyout of the value.
This is really more like.
This is more like a finance.
It's more like a rent to own with.
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly what this is.
So, you can buy a back.
So I, I did ask for samples, um, which I got, he, I had him scan some typical kinda stuff. Um, bring me the hard copies, he sent me electronically the copies, he showed me a videotape of them scanning it super fast. It's like dang, I was very happy with that. And the quality is perfect. Whatever the, it's an exact copy of, of what they scanned in to begin with. Um, so I'm very happy with the quality of that scanner, um, the speed it would take and it would, it actually, um, I wanted about space, but I'm pretty sure it can work in my office, you actually feed it in the front, it feeds it through and pops it right back out the front. You can make it do whatever you want, but it's right there, so that's, that'll be handy. Yeah, so, um, I've seen it in action, um, not physically, but in the video and, uh, it was actually the salesperson doing, videotaping it with a camera, so it was a very low quality video. But it showed what he was doing, so that was great.
Okay. Any other questions? Alright, um, I think, I'm gonna suggest, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just.
I'm gonna suggest a motion, um, to authorize the expenditure of up to seven thousand five hundred dollars, for the purchase of the large format scanner funded from the municipal capital account. That's what I would suggest. And I'm suggesting seventy-five hundred just to provide a little bit of cushion if there's.
Well, that'll cover the maintenance as well.
That, well, that's, my, my question is, would, is, uh, can the capital account cover the maintenance agreement?
If it's a separate thing, technically no.
That would, that's, that's my concern also and, uh, I think this is a great idea, I think it's gonna be so helpful. So I, I would make a motion for seventy-five hundred dollars, uh, plus we authorize the, uh, expenditure for the maintenance agreement.
Yeah, we don't need to authorize the three hundred and ninety-five, that's a, town manager can just pay that. You just have to make it work within the existing operating budget.
Right.
And where the, uh, where codes is, which is what, that's planning in historic district, right?
Planning codes.
Yep.
So, you have any issue with that?
No, I'll have to look at the budget and make sure we have it.
Yeah. Unless they, yeah, so, um, so if we, if we authorize up to the seventy-five hundred, then if we can get them to put that first year of the maintenance agreement on the same, same invoice as the, uh.
I like it.
The machine, we can make it part of the capital.
Okay.
So.
So then we should make it seventy-six.
Yeah, I'm gonna say you have seventy-five fifteen.
Seventy-six, so, so do you wanna, you wanna rea- re-articulate your motion?
Sure, I'll, I make a motion that we, uh, authorize the expenditure of up to, up to seven thousand six hundred dollars for the purchase of the, the wide format scanner.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Alright, we have four zero in favor. Great, thanks.
Thank you, good stuff.
Okay, next on the agenda is a quick claim deed and, um, these are situations where a property owner, has had their property go through an automatic foreclosure due to non-payment of taxes. And then what oftentimes happens is that they then come up with the money for taxes, um, but, you know, but we've already foreclosed, so now we issue the, quick claim deed that essentially gives the property back to, um, the, for the property owners because they've paid, um, the, uh, the amounts due. And that's, do we even have a copy of the receipt here? And we have the documentation, um, that all that has happened. Any, did anybody have any questions on this?
I, I've, I've read it quickly, I just, um, I, I, I'm sure it's fine, I, I was kind of, um, I don't remember us, I know it's automatic. A lot of times when there's things that have been automatic because of default, there's a discussion prior to us, uh, proceeding with foreclosure. And, you know, my only concern on things like this, this particular property is, I, I believe this property is, is a, is a rental situation. I mean, they pay a lot of rent, so when a town takes something over like this, you could be responsible for that lot rent, you could be responsible for the removal and et cetera of that particular piece of, or that particular home, if you didn't wanna elect to keep it or sell it. And a nineteen sixty-four home, which is pre-HUD, can sometimes be expensive, they didn't build them prior to that. Um, so my, my only concern was, A, the release wasn't right, only because it almost looks like some map and lot number on real property and this is just personal property technically.
Well, the, if it's, if it's a renter, they're not the ones that are on the hook for property taxes.
Right, but they're, they're paying tax, it's basically personal property tax because they have, they own the home. It's like you can, you can se- you can separate your personal, your house tax, but if you wanna sell me your land and still live in your house and pay me a dollar a month for the rest of your life.
Right, right.
It's kinda what this situation is.
It is that way.
So. This says country acres and I believe that's all to rent over there.
So, so is this on the property or on the house, I guess is my question then?
Well, that, that's, that's really my question because.
There wouldn't be a deed on just, there wouldn't be a, a deed
On the house.
In the registry of deeds on the.
Yeah, because.
If it's a rent, on.
Right, so, but my concern would be, did we, did we put a mortgage on somebody else's property? A, because this is, this is, this is technically a titled unit.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I'll have to look into that if.
Okay, so just double check. I have two concerns really, one, did we, did we do this the right way, because it's, it's really personal property, it's, 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 it's not considered real estate because it has wheels and axles underneath it. Um, and two, the property that it resides on is somebody else's property, they are, they're a renter.
This says a certain parcel of land with buildings there on.
Right, but I don't believe they own the land, I believe they own the house that the land sits on.
That could just be formed template language.
Typically, those are, um, those are basically like a car where they have a title and there's a lien and the lien is released via whoever the lien holder is, but it's not typically, unless it's on a foundation attached to a real estate property, or real estate. So it's just more of a, just a caution, I don't, I'm not sure if that's right or wrong, I, I'm not in. I just thought every single home unit in there is owned by one particular company slash family. And that's, we, they don't, we don't, we can't take property that's, it's, it's two different items. There should be one, a property tax bill that goes to the individual that owns that land and a property tax or slash personal property bill that goes to the people that live in the mobile home. I'm not a lawyer, I'm just, that's what I've seen every other place when it's rented land.
So you're sure that's rented land, positive?
I would bet a fair amount of money on it, but I, I couldn't say with absolute certainty because maybe he sold one lot or something of that nature in there, but it's, it's a mobile home park and that's typically how they're set up.
And it doesn't mention a deed into these folks, so. Well, I think, I think given what has been the tax lien. So, I think what would probably be best then is, um, if, if you could to, like, actually, you know, like it, whether it's an email to Jerry or whatever, actually write out, like, specifically what your questions are or concerns are and then we can, um, have it reviewed by, um, you know, basically research either through town attorney or whatever.
I, I think if we're discharging, we're fine, I just, and, and, and I, like I said, the two points that I was trying to make is when we take something in like this, we should probably agree to take it in, it's kinda like us taking in like the town.
Well, no, cuz this.
Little town property?
No, cuz this is, these are automatic, if they don't pay their property taxes, the town automatically puts the lien in the registry deeds and eighteen months later you automatically foreclose.
But we do have an option.
Yeah, they, well, well, I think what Rich is referring to, there, there's a piece of property in town.
Right.
Which we, um, annually.
Yeah, don't.
Annually don't foreclose on because it's the, um, it's the former town dump site and for years, the, the town has not wanted to assume ownership of that site because of potential environmental cleanup liability that might come with it. So there is, I don't, I don't know how that situation differs or doesn't from, from this.
It just differs from the fact that this is a pre-HUD home built in the sixties.
I mean, in, I mean, in terms of the process for why is, why are some automatic and others not automatic?
And I question the process also because it's not, it, it's, it's, it's one of those quasi, you could ask Jack, but it's, we would call it a channel, like when you do something like that, it's, it's called a channel loan because there's no real estate property attached to it. So they're, they're really just have, it's no different than you buying a storage shed and parking your fifty-seventh Chevelle in there or something, you know, and they, you don't, you're just renting the land that that vehicle sits on and that's kinda what they're doing. The, the big concern with me was just taking over something like that because we could be liable for law rent, we could be liable for disposal, we could be liable for towing it out of there, et cetera.
You're concerned how we got it versus discharging it?
Right, and then my second concern is, did we discharge it the right way and did we accidentally, and maybe we did not inadvertently put a lien on somebody's real property, cuz that's what it looks to me.
So, i- if we put a lien and they didn't own it, then it secures nothing, so it's a big nothing, so that, that doesn't concern me.
Well, it's not a concern, but it's a big concern if somebody goes to sell or they go to refinance their property and they find out there's a lien on it, cuz it does take some paperwork to get it out of there.
But not if they don't own it.
It still takes some paperwork to get it out of there. De- dealt with this a couple times in my life.
Well, I think, I think at this point though, I, I, I think, I think, yeah, I think you've raised some good questions about the front end of the process and like how we got it, but now we're on the back end, so rightly, wrongly, whatever the process was, we, we had a lien on, we had three liens for three different years on, uh, for twenty-one, twenty and nineteen taxes, those taxes have been paid, so we're saying we're gonna release, release whatever lien we have.
So that's clear.
Right, so I think that piece, I think we're good.
I'm good with that, yeah, we're good with it.
But I do think you raised some good questions about the upfront process and like, is that the way it's, it's, it should have been done? And I think it's good to get clarification on that.
We personally have, we've had a couple of cases and one, um, that was real property with a mobile home on it and we were, I don't know, a smidgen from foreclosure on that, but we had a debate about it before we did it.
Yeah, that, I don't know, that, it wasn't, it wasn't a mobile, but it was, uh, it was a house, but they didn't own the land.
Yeah, vice versa, yeah, six and one half, it was the same situation.
Right. So.
No, that was, no, you're, I know which one you're talking about, that's one with the two houses. I'm thinking about, uh, the one up by Dave Moncel's house, the one before Dave Moncel's.
Yeah.
Just, it's just for, like, those things can be expensive sometimes to get rid of. But I think as long as we did the same discharge of what we filed originally, then the property's obviously free and clear and that's a big concern, obviously, that, that's taken care of with this.
This just puts it back before.
Uh, we only have one, um, park in the town, to my knowledge, is that right Kelvin? So anything in that park, I would think we'd just, problem for your time, but we need to really just do a little more due diligence on it before we start taking it over.
But like, we said, like, I think this is a, I think this is a state prescribed automatic process, I don't think it was a local policy or anything.
It's based on what was filed, there were tax liens filed, although based on the real estate description, it's describing a, a mobile home and not real property, so I don't, I think you're right about them not owning the property.
Right.
But, again, I think discharging it, it's a whole big, essentially nothing and it was the wrong lien that was used, it should have been, um, a UCC lien or something like that.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
But it's something, something to look at for, for future.
Yeah, I don't know.
Alright, so, I look at it this way, if we.
We're back to square one, so it doesn't matter.
If we did it the right way, and they, they paid the taxes, we're gonna release it. If we did it the wrong way, let's give it back and fix it.
That's what was gonna be my suggestion.
Alright.
Although Kelvin could get that out of there in five minutes.
Uh, we do need to change the date on the deed cuz it does say March twenty twenty-one, above the signature line.
Is that their original deed or is that the?
No, this is.
Oh, that's the one that we're doing?
Correct, yeah. So we can just cross that out when we, when it's signed tonight, but.
Like you just cross that off and initial it and change the date, that'll be okay. Alright, so, is there a motion?
I'll, I'll move that we, uh, that the board sign the municipal quitclaim deed without covenants that's been presented.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. On this twenty for one day of November, oh, sorry, twenty.
Second two day of November.
Yeah, throw me off on that one, was that? Said parcel of land.
No, it's just, it's just the wrong, I think the wrong form that was used.
Okay. Um. Well, it would have been the chief's night to go first if he hadn't run out the door, so Kelvin, I guess you get to go tonight.
Thank you.
I had to call that in just in time.
Is that what you did, buddy?
I dropped my phone and I went, look, I gotta call. So, I got, uh.
Uh, this is supposed to be notarized though.
Afterwards or during?
Well, we're signing.
Are you a notary?
I'm not.
Does it say notarized or just witnessed?
Notarized, it needs to be notarized, so.
Josh, you're a notary, right?
Like, yeah, but we didn't do, we didn't do the oath and I can't notarize myself, so.
You could have just crossed you out and you could have notarized three, we only needed three.
So we gotta, so the, that signature page is not valid then?
That's right, I think we should do this together at the next meeting and we'll have a notary or.
Yeah, let me.
Alright, they could pick, could fix the date too.
We can fix the date too, yeah.
Typically, I could pass it, if they just.
That email.
Cuz it's on record and we're all, they usually notarize it in the past.
Alright, Kelvin, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, we've been working on the trucks, getting them ready for winter and, uh, everything's in great shape, staffing's in great shape. CJ Larrabee's back driving for us, used to work here back before my day. Welcome addition to the team. Four AM Wednesday morning, we were out treating snow before the morning traffic and back in at ten PM that night, taking black ice. Uh, everything went off without a hitch. We finished grading, uh, all the gravel roads in town, got them in, got the proper crown and on them before, uh, before snow, before they freeze up. We had the chief meteorologist Roger Griswold, uh, from WMTW come in and give us a class on, uh, forecasting weather and the difference between dew point relative humidity and trying to determine, uh, black ice. Sometimes we get black ice, no precipitation, it'll just be the dew point in the air or fog that creates the ice and so being able to forecast that, uh, would be helpful, so that was a insightful event. Uh, M, MDOT installed the guardrails down Route nine where the culvert washout was, that's all fixed, I don't know when they're gonna pick up their barrels, but, um, I'm sure the fire department could use a few of those if they're still there by the time we. Uh, they installed the, uh, warning lights down at Dead Man's Curve or Sarosis Corner, we'll call it, I keep telling people not to say that and.
Let's go Route nine and, uh, Swamp Road.
I know when I write it, I don't write that, so yeah, I'm not, uh.
You got a reporter sitting behind you, you know.
Yeah, it's Sarosis Corner. Uh.
AKA.
So, and I guess one thing I need to explain, I've had a few questions about where the lights are. In fact, I had it today, I went down there to look at it the first time, I went up and said, hey, there's no lights down there and the lights are embedded in the sign itself, so if, and, and it's not gonna flash unless there's traffic coming, it's radar sense, so if you drive up and don't see lights flashing, it's not because they're not working, it's because there's nothing coming, so.
So I don't have to stop, I can just plow right in?
Oh yeah, I wouldn't do that. It's a mechanical, it's a mechanical device and anything mechanical is subject to failure, so.
It did appear to be working pretty well while I've driven through it.
It's been working, uh, uh, it, the, the radar sensor's back a little further than I would like, but the house is closer to the hill, have all those pine trees, so they couldn't get the solar panel to work there, so. It's, the lights are gonna flash a little longer than I'd like to see them flash, but we haven't come up with a solution yet, but with an alternative, but, I mean, they seem to be working okay.
Wish they put one more set of lights, which is the one coming down over the hill, there's no lights there blinking that somebody's coming from the left from the Lisbon side because those are the people that fly straight across and those are the people that sideswipe everybody and end up putting them out into the.
Or they pull in on the guardrail.
Or they pull in on the guardrail.
Why they go that way?
I, that never made sense to me.
I will say that those people that pull against the guardrail are facing the wrong way up the road and they will get a ticket every single time they're facing the wrong way.
I don't know, that's something that somebody started doing a long time ago. So, uh, the, uh, uh, crookers started paving Bowie Hill last week, broke down, so they're still sitting there, we should be finishing that up on Monday.
Is that the last of it?
Yeah, yeah.
I say you're running out of time.
Yeah, we got forty something, we got forty-six degree, put in a fifty on Monday, so we're gonna finish it up. Well, they've still got like three other towns they gotta do, all their annual paving still yet to do, so.
Sheesh, it's a long thing happening.
Yeah, well, no, they're gonna go.
Yeah, I see the plant's still running every morning, I'm going to work, I can see the smoke coming up.
Uh, worked, uh, with the CIP application process with Jerry, I think we've got that wrapped up, ready for, I guess Jerry's going for a meeting next week and then the department heads will be going after that. Continued work on the twenty twenty-three budget, I gave Jerry my numbers today, so he should be, uh, we went over them, so we'll be finessing those. The new truck is in Westbrook, arrived today, uh, I called today to make sure and see if it was gonna get here tomorrow when it was supposed to and he said, I'm sitting in it right now, so. Good, good, good timing, so, um, I've called Viking to see when they can get, uh, uh, the equipment on it. And, uh, so that's, that's, uh, that's what I got.
Everybody have any questions or things for Kelvin? Alright, thank you, sir.
God did a good job the other day on the snow, by the way, it was nice.
It was a good trial run.
Hey, does that thing come with a full tank of gas? Just like a new car?
Well, hopefully, hopefully it comes with diesel, not gas, but I'll take it.
Does it come filled up? You get a full, okay.
I'm surprised.
I wouldn't tell you.
And like I said, the fire chief had to step out, but we have a pretty copy of his report and it was, uh, pretty routine stuff, nothing, uh, you know, alarming or concerning or requiring discussion at this point. Okay. Town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I don't have a lot to report, believe it or not, after the, after the election, there, things quieted down, but, um, what I can tell you is the CIP committee got all of the materials and the first scheduled meeting is November thirtieth and at that time we'll probably pick two more dates and hopefully have that wrapped up in three, three weeks, so, that's good.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
It's the first big step.
Uh, the only other thing I have is that the, uh, the Durham Giving Tree is up and it's set up and the tree is awaiting, uh, tags um, from folks and you can get, pick up tags, December sixth, right here at the town office. There are, you know, donations in addition, we'll be collecting, um, non-perishable food items and new unwrapped gifts, so we're kinda doing a, a two thing this year and, uh, the toys will get delivered to Laco, is that? So that's up, so December sixth, come get your tags and, and do the donation.
Come get the tags, when the tags are described like a need that a family has.
Right.
You go, you buy.
Right.
Whatever's on the tag and bring it back here.
Right, so, so families with need can come in and put their tag on the tree and then someone will come in and, and grab the tag and fulfill the.
How are we, um, how are we putting out requests for people to let us know what they need if, you know, and how, how are we? Cause I remember last year, I remember like we didn't.
I didn't even get one.
We didn't get any tags, um.
And I thought they came from.
And I thought they came from, is it Lakewood?
We used to be partnered with.
I think it was Lakewood.
Yeah. And we, I got a lot of, um, tags from them, but that, I don't know if it was a COVID thing or whatever, but that partnership like didn't happen the last couple of years, and so there were.
A handful.
A handful, if that, of tags, um, for people to fill. So I'm wondering, how are we getting tags?
Yeah, I know they're gonna put the information on the website for the most to know. I'll have to ask Jessica how she's.
Okay, okay.
Cause she did say last year wasn't, didn't go well.
Well, it was, didn't not go bad, we just didn't get a lot of, uh, requests, for lack of better words, so most of us always, most of the select board always pick one or two tags, and we didn't get the opportunity, there were so few.
Let me, let me ask. Let me ask, but that's basically the only two things that I, that I have. I, I have been working on the budget itself, so we're looking pretty good there, so we should. I know the capital got a little bit late, but I'm not so sure the, the actual budget process will be.
Yeah, I think we're fine.
I think we're in pretty good, pretty good shape that way, so yeah, that's all I got.
Any, any questions for Jerry? Okay, uh, we're gonna circle back, if, if the chief would like an opportunity to come on up, he's, he's back, so come on up, chief.
Those world famous.
The answer to your question is single vehicle rollover occupants out and okay, being evaluated by EMS.
Alright.
Uh, Lisbon police chief on scene, rendered care prior to our arrival.
Alright.
Will be brief, uh, I, I gave you the, the minutes, it is sort of my notes. November twentieth, which was Sunday, we did a live fire training all day, the entire department over at Yarmouth Burn Building. Uh, we're a member of that training association, that cost us a thousand dollars a year, so I made sure we got our money's worth. So the entire department, I think there was twenty-two of us after breakfast, seven-thirty in the morning went down there. I think we had six or eight fires, and you know, that's for rehab and fire support and pump operators, and and it's the best training you can get, so, uh, that went well. No injuries, couple of hurt feeling reports, but we didn't break anything.
Couple of hurt feeling reports.
Other than that, we were doing okay. Uh, as you can, as you can see, we responded to thirty-five calls for the month of October, nine-one-one calls. We're well over a three hundred calls for service currently, and that's four hundred and sixteen responses, so if you split the rescue side and the fires, fire side, four hundred and sixteen responses. Um, we'll have it broken down later, but, uh, just know that the staff cars, car one and two are responding to almost forty percent of every call, there's a staff car on it. Uh, the rescue, the, the ambulance is up to two hundred and fourteen, and running the numbers, twenty percent of our entire call volume is mutual aid, and that's both rescue and fire, but twenty percent legitimate, a fifth of our calls are mutual aid. Uh, that's forty times to Lisbon currently, for Lisbon EMS.
Yeah.
Correct, or sorry if you already said, what is that compared to, um, for years prior, as far as that, that forty percent?
I'll have to, we, we usually look back five years, um, all increasing.
And is, not that we'd ever deny anybody, it's just more of my personal question, but is there a limit?
So I've been, I've been talking, no, I, I know where you're going, and that's why, I've been talking to other fire chiefs, topsom had a limit. They went over like fifty times to a, a local community and only received eight in return.
Sure.
But ours is so far forty, and I think we've received thirty from the same department.
So it's equitable?
So it is what they call reciprocity, or it's mutual.
Okay.
So yes, a- and we do have an understanding, chief to EMS chief over there, that, that it's, you know, we don't bill them. It's sort of mutual.
Sure.
Uh, just keeping you apprised of it though, because the busier they get in Lisbon, and, and the less opportunity that United ambulances can cover them, the more we go over, we're like a second, second, uh, fiddle, if you will, but second choice. They always try to go with United, a- and that's been failing them, in my opinion.
Will, will you have a?
I will have all the breakdown.
Not a breakdown, uh, um, I'm sure you will that, but I, I mean, never mind, it's back, I was gonna ask you, is there, is there a limit to like?
Oh, um. No, there, there's, there's not like a standard in the industry, I, I think it's actually up to, uh, town government to, to see if it's still mutual and, and working for both parties. Um, my opinion, uh, because mutually, you never know if it's a rescue or a fire call, and again, I have them all broken down by town, by, uh, which side of the house. You, you know, we're not running as many fires anymore, but when we have them, we need all the surrounding towns to come and not question it. And, uh, you know, last week, we went to Brunswick, I mean, uh, Freeport on a second alarm brush fire, so we're a good neighbor. I'd like to keep, keep it in good standing, we're a good neighbor, we're not relying on others as much as maybe others are relying on us.
Does that affect morale?
It's a great question. I don't think it affects morale, because the gung ho people r- really wanna help. A- and whether that's Durham's, or Freeport, or you know, Lisbon, they just wanna help, they wanna do the job. A- and we do have the resources to provide that currently, um, and it, it really is training. So when we go to a fire, I'm glad that we don't have the numbers that some of these other towns have for fires. I think we've done two structured fires this year, um, they get training, they get on the job experience, and we help a neighbor. So it really does actually improve morale, you know, it's almost, it's almost a reward, everyone in the fire service will tell you. We run a couple hundred EMS calls and try to provide all the help we can get, and, and try to use our skills at one fire. You know, it's like a hundred to one, um, so, but i- the turnout is fantastic, uh, there, for Durham.
Yeah, I think, I phrase mine kind of, my, my bigger, I, not, my, my bigger concern is when there are those, um, private contracted services that we're having to pick up the slack for, because somebody hired it out versus they have their own municipal.
Yes.
That, that's, that's really my bigger concern, is we're not really necessarily covering a town, we're covering a service that was contracted.
Yes. Um, a- and that's why I put that on the radar.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's sitting here thinking, I mean, I, and I know we don't, you know, we kinda have a gentleman's agreement not to charge each other. But I think you could justifiably structure something so that, well, if the imbalance gets to a certain point, at that point, we're gonna start charging, you know, cause if, you know, forty, thirty, to me, that's well within reasonableness.
Sure.
But if it's like, I think you, that, somebody's coming to us ten times, and we're going to them eighty times.
Correct.
Then I think a conversation is, okay, whatever the threshold is, I, we didn't even wanna guess, but whatever we feel it's like it's in, out of balance, then we consider, you know, getting reimbursed or whatever.
Has been a standard in this valley, as far as when it does get out of balance, they do start charging.
Okay, okay.
I was more concerned, I was more concerned, my, me personally, I was more concerned with the private contracting. I know a lot of towns have gone to that, and those particular, not all of them, but some of these private contractors haven't been able to fulfill their obligation.
Correct.
Because of the, the staffing, and that, that's my bigger concern, it's not really a municipal aid, although it is, we're helping our citizens. We're really bailing out a company that got contract.
Yeah, and I guess my.
For profit, if you.
For profit, if you.
My follow-up question to that would be is, you know, are there, are there state regulations that require certain levels of staffing and equipment for a private contractor if they've taken on, you know, like a certain amount of contract to cover a certain area, a number of people, whatever, are there, is there any regulation that says, you know, well, if you're gonna cover an area with fifty thousand people in it, then you need to have X number of staff minimum, and X number of vehicles minimum available?
Main, i- i- is pushing towards that.
Okay.
There isn't regulation as far as that particular, as far as population verse, paramedic verse ambulances. Um, a- and again, for profit, they try to, again, opinion, skimp on the labor a- and what they offer for the profit margin, cause that's where it is, call volume verse.
It's the obvious cost.
Revenue received, um, however, there is another ambulance private for profit in the area on that end. That seems to be going down the same path of either failing or not living, not living up to their contract. Where we do get into it is, is the next town over, uh, Lewiston, does have a contract that they signed, that I'm not privy to, but that does say, you know, that private ambulance will provide so many ambulances, so many paramedics, and so many, you know, basic trucks, under an EMS system, under a, a state EMS system.
So do you have, uh, any data on, or are you able to mine the data on when you do get a call? Is it for the lack of service in the other town due to the contractor, or not? Like, can you tell from the call?
Reason code for the mutual aid?
Yeah.
Usually you get a second tone.
Correct, I ask, I ask that question, but no, very, very seldom do I really get the answer of, are they on a second call, are they tied up at the hospital?
Or just not available.
Yeah, or was their backup not available? Uh, recently, I, I know, I think I told you, we went to Bowdoin. Uh, uh, on a mistake, but w- we backed up Lisbon on a motor vehicle accident, not a mass casualty, not even more than one vehicle. And our, our rig was in Bowdoin. No, again, that's being a good neighbor, but I, I just bring it to you. I, I don't want to miss an important call in Durham, because our rescue is in Bowdoin or somewhere else, that's all. Again, being a good neighbor, but.
And I think, I think, you know, speaking for myself, but I, I think the board would look to, to you and Jerry, like if you feel like it gets to the point where this, we need to consider something.
Yes.
Some, then I think we would look to you guys to, you know, be the ones to judge what you think is, okay, this is outside the threshold of reasonable this now, and we need to do something.
Okay, I'll certainly keep your abreast of all the, the data, i- it's data, data-driven.
Do you think that's, that the, um, there was kind of a push, I don't know, a few years back, probably prior to COVID for, you know, maybe third-party ambulances and so forth, and, and subbing this stuff out, are, are the municipalities shifting back over to their own forces?
Powell is still, because there's such a low population and call volume, is still contracting with Freeport, fire for that. Uh, and most recently, Freeport was unavailable, and, and we picked up the slack to Powell, o- on a call. These things happen, Freeport's getting busy, um, it appears fire-based EMS i- is cost-effective. EMS almost, it almost isn't profitable. So the town, as you all know, really sort of not foots the bill, but really supports the fire-based EMS, as they do in Durham. And what you get for the per diems during the day is a lot of times a dual role firefighter and E M T. So that if a fire call does come in, they're already in the building, they're already standing there next to the pumper truck, and they go and put out the house to the car wreck, to the carbon monoxide alarm, wha- whatever be the case. That's, you're already paying a person to be there, now it's a dual role. So fire-based EMS, i- i- and across the country, is really, um, kinda taking a front, uh, the lead of it, uh, a- and it seems to work in Durham. Um, w- we have every shift covered for the month of November, we're working on December, I'm not sure that's happened, I mean, every shift.
Um, that's awesome.
It's fantastic, and it's a testament to, to the members over there, that are now standing out in the middle of Royals Borough directing traffic, waiting for a, a tow and and whatnot, and evaluating the patient, but, uh, a- and I only say it for the public at home, that you know, don't realize on a cold Tuesday night that there's eight to ten gentlemen, you know, standing out there helping their neighbors, really.
Yep, yep.
But no, it's a testament to them, but fire-based EMS seems to be the way to go. Uh, because twofold, the contracts, sometimes they don't, privates don't live up to the contracts.
Sure.
And there's really no, uh, teeth to, to make them. I, I, I mean.
That's where I was going with the state regulation question.
Yeah, a- and they can, some can manipulate, like, oh, I did have a provider on scene. I've talked to another chief in Knox County, they get a provider, like in a fly car, but that's not an ambulance. You could wait forty minutes before a transport, which is an ambulance, gets there, so one individual really is a provider, but, but can't do much.
Boy, that would be a, a great story for some enterprising reporter to look into about
proliferation of private ambulances and the impact on, on other towns.
And the other.
Just saying.
The other thing you lose is the forty to sixty thousand revenue that the ambulance does bring back to the town.
Right.
That's going too, because the co- the private contract garners that.
Yeah.
Charges you upfront, garners that, and in my opinion, a- and I've been E M T firefighter in, in three states, i- it's a lesser service.
Yeah.
It, it's a longer wait time, a- and for them, they, they have to be profitable, so that's doing transfers out of the hospital, you never know where they are. Um, y- you know, I, I know you've gone down this road before, um, a- as long as the members across the street continue to top-notch service, I, I, I'm not sure Durham can do better.
Yep, yep.
My, my concern's not with Durham, my concern is Durham paying the bill for all.
Right, the impact to Durham from other towns that do, that go that route.
And, and that's why I wanna let you know, and we haven't missed a call. So, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I think we went to Lisbon five-thirty in the morning, when we don't have staff across the street, and people came in, and made the, the apparatus and, and took care of it.
Sure.
Uh, again, testament to, to the members. Um, any other questions on that? A- and when we get to the end of the season, I will give you
Okay.
The breakdowns of all that, so you can make informed decisions.
We touched on this a couple of weeks ago, and I went home and I was thinking about the whole timeline, but these private organizations that sign a contract with these towns, our, 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 our folks are the ones fulfilling that obligation, and I don't know if that's necessarily the right way to go. We're picking up slack when they fall short, yeah.
And I think everybody agrees in the emergency services, when you get that mass casualty call, that
Oh, hands on deck.
Call, all bets are off, the, the rules actually change for EMS, uh, and that's understood, but these routine calls where y- you know, y- your staff is called in sick, and you're relying on others, and, and then maybe Lisbon who relies on United, and then they fall short, now relies on Durham.
Right.
Uh, a- and I don't want Durham, as you all, to suffer because of it, but, but, uh, the Lisbon side of things, they do offer a lot of support to us.
Yep.
So that's fair.
As long as it's equitable.
Yes.
Maybe we can negotiate a discount on animal control.
Throw them over a couple of ambulances, they gotta throw us a couple more police cars over here at the bridge once in a while.
It's up, it's up to you. Um, moving on quickly, our, the fire department safety committee is now joined with the town safety committee, uh, as a component. Uh, and we've already met, so that was having, uh, Calvin with us, eventually the town manager will join us quarterly. Um, so we've sort of joined forces for insurance, for safety, for, for the town employees. Um, and that, that went well. Um, we recently, uh, part of the safety committee, I had to come up with a return to duty, a return to duty policy, um, I believe Calvin had one, I was talking to the town manager about it, it's been established and updated. I always like to let you know, and we've had an updated policy. Uh, we have numerous grants that have been received and submitted. We're actually, I have a gentleman for us working on a quarter million dollar grant for radios, the A F G Assistance to Fire. Uh, completely, I, I didn't realize we have five different portable radios, they're all in different systems. Uh, Lewiston Auburn just upgraded their systems, w- we're not trying to be city, but we do need consistency. Every person in every button seat needs a radio, and our apparatus need better ones, especially since we're talking to, um, you know, out of Auburn for the county, so some of the hills and thirty-nine square miles gets a little, little scratchy around here, but we are working on that. Uh, we just submitted another main municipal grant, that cycle that the town manager knows about, and I submitted one for five thousand dollars to the wildland for our equipment. Uh, we are really supported, and that's what we do on the day-to-day, is try to garner those, everything that's offered uh, to backfill our, our budget. Um, we do continue to hire for new EMS per diem shifts. Uh, budget continues to be on track, and training, I just wanted to let you know, one of the locals actually gave a house that they bought right down here on Hallowell. Um, uh, a thousand block, it's a blue house that he's actually tearing down. So instead of, uh, what, we really don't do live fire in houses, but we've, um, cut holes in the roof, we're ventilated, we're throwing the ladder truck. We're, we're practiced with the new recruits, we've done, you know, uh, rescue training in there, breaching walls. All the stuff that you, you can't really do at the academy, uh, hands-on drill. And that put us within one mile of a, of a major traffic accident last Friday, so the boys were there, and one mile later, you know, uh, they were on scene, so.
Yep.
That's the bonus to that.
Okay.
And I appreciate it, the, the gentleman knows who he is, but appreciate the, the donation of a house. So if you see a house out there with, with some new skylights, that was us.
Alright.
That's everything.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Good stuff.
Safe out there.
I'll try, oh, that's why I came back, it's warm in here. Alright. Alright, on the consent agenda, um, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Rich moving, Josh second, all in favor? Alright, uh, upcoming meeting, uh, select board, um, twelve thirteen and twelve twenty-seven. Uh, six thirty P M here at the town hall. Conservation commission is having a public information meeting with regard to, um, proposed changes to the town map of resource protection, this is kind of the follow-up to what we brought to town meeting last year. Um, and was.
what we brought to town meeting last year, um and was not approved by voters. This is like kind of the this this will have a question about adding and then also a question about removing certain properties from resource protection. So the public information session on that, uh there is uh December sixth at the Eureka Center at six thirty. It's not the formal public hearing that will come later. This is an information session. And I believe all all people impacted and uh are being notified with a mailing, um so that they're aware of the discussion that's happening on on the sixth.
Yeah, postcards went out.
Postcard, okay. Um, okay. And at this point, I will move us, uh this should be a short one. Uh move us into a, an executive session pursuant to one MRSA, four oh five six A for the purpose of considering board and committee appointments.
I'll second.
Joe seconds. All in favor? Thanks for coming, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
Happy Thanksgiving.